July 9th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor High Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll? Mrs. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts recorded absence. Mr. Conley recorded an absence. Would you please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Al Simpson? Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 9th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor High Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System or docs. The public can assess the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available from the district website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on the Spectrum Cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Approval of amendments.
Someone?
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley? I need to abstain for the June 22nd meeting. It's not here. It's time for hearing of the public of any agenda items. Hearing none, let's move to superintendent's report and recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda. I recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A2.
Someone?
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, members of the board, at this time I would like to invite Mr. Casella and Mrs. Jisling to the podium to recognize our baseball team for their outstanding season.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to introduce the coaching staff and members of the 2019 Mentor High baseball team. I'd ask head coach Jeff Haas to join me up here at the podium. This year's addition of the Mentor Cardinal varsity baseball team got on a roll that took them all the way to the state finals. The Cardinals finished the regular season as Greater Cleveland Conference runners-up with a 10-4 conference record. Once the postseason started is when the Cardinals though got hot. They won a sexual title with a 4-0 win over University School. In the district play, they defeated Riverside 4-1 in the semifinals and then knocked off Mayfield in the district final for the second year in a row, 9-3, sending them to the regional tournament. At the regional tournament in Lewisville, they defeated Greater Cleveland Conference Philip Brunswick 1-0 in extra innings and truly was one of the best big high school baseball games I've ever watched. Lots of excitement in that game. They moved on to the regional final and they scored early and often and defeated Walsh Deschues with 7-5, sending them to the state final four. At Canal Park in Akron in the state final, they defeated Dayton Springbrough 4-0 in the semifinal game, sending them to the state championship. State final, they faced rival San Ignatius and in extra innings they fell 4-2 but ended a spectacular season with a 23-6 overall record, finishing as state runner-up. The young men in the coaching staff should be congratulated for the manner they represented Mentor High on and off the field, and they were first class all of the time and I couldn't be prouder of them throughout the season. So gentlemen, as we call your name, if you can come on up and receive your certificate, acknowledge members of the board, and just stay standing upright here until everybody's been recognized. Alex Edwards.
Alex here today.
Cale Gray. Zach Meskett. Chad Rogers. Jeter Manfred. Eric Coon. Jake Estelle. Noah Gladish. Aiden Buckley. And Joe Romberg's here, one of our coaches.
He's here as well.
Congratulations to all of these guys.
Perfect. Where's the other picture? I'm missing one. Everybody wants to see it. Okay, and then I'll go out of the way for Mom's and Dad's.
At this time, let's take a five-minute break so the baseball gentlemen can all rest for the upcoming season.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, I recommend approval of new policy 6.53.
Someone?
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Next, I recommend approval of the resolution adopting 2019-2020 Columbia Day Alternative Makeup Plan.
Someone?
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. I also recommend approval of the 2019-2020 Parent Student Handbooks for the elementary schools, middle schools, high school, and CARES.
Someone?
Call the roll. Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Joe Glavine to the podium for the Career Tech
Okay. All right. So, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, I appreciate the opportunity to have this intimate setting here to go over Career Tech with you guys. I want to go over the curriculum updates for the upcoming school year. But first, I want to just kind of give everyone a little bit of a background on the Career So what is the Lake Shore Compact? You know, many of us already know, the Lake Shore Compact is a career technical consortium serving Upland Mentor and Wickliffe School Systems. Our students participate junior and senior year of high school and Career Tech programs. We are now currently up to 19 program offerings with the two new additional programs we're going to be offering this year. And then, students in the Lake Shore Compact programs are eligible to receive college credit upon successful completion of their program. So to give you an idea of the scope and the size of our programs and the relation to those districts, we have over, at any time, we have over 600 students that participate in their junior, senior year in Career Tech programs. We currently have over 150 Mentor High School juniors that will be starting in Career Tech program this upcoming fall. Just go over a couple stats that relate in terms of the state report card, how the Ohio Department of Education looks at our career technical education. One of the first numbers that we think is pretty important is looking at graduation rates. So, relative to students who do a career technical education program, we have a 95.9% graduation within four years. So that's a really good number to have in terms of the students that go into Career Tech programs. That's the percentage of graduates from high school. The other number that we're pretty excited about is in terms of post-program outcomes. So what that is, the first thing is this, we can actually say that we have 100% post-program outcomes where students are either going to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. So either enrolled in post-secondary options, enlisted in a branch of the military, or employed in the public sector working. One of the other numbers I think that a lot of times kind of gets lost in this is that of those students in their post-program outcomes, 75% of students are enrolled in either a two-year or four-year university after completion of their Career Tech program. So the goal of our Career Tech programs is looking to how would we meet the needs of the students, and then also how would we meet the needs of our community? And we do that through a combination that we're going to talk about tonight of creation of new programs, investing in our current programs, strengthening our business partnerships, and then also focusing on increasing student internships. We've done a really good job the past several years of really ingraining ourselves and working with the city. We work with the majority of chambers in Lake County, AWT, Lakeland Community College, Lake Erie College, I'm going to talk about tonight, and really collaborating on these So our first program that's going to be starting next year is going to be our HBACR program. So we are going to be able to offer the heating ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration program for students of the Lake Shore Compact this upcoming school year due to a new partnership agreement with Lake Erie College. We recently signed a three-year agreement with them for the use of their brand-new HBACR facility. We have access to, it's roughly an $800,000 facility that we'd love access to those next three years. This is going to be a one-year program that will result in students having the opportunity to earn an Environmental Protection Agency EPA Refrigerant Recovery Core 608 certification. Basically, that's the baseline you need to have that to get a career in heating and cooling. And that's really what we're looking at, is looking at these industry credentials. The certification is also a 12-point industry credential recognized by the Ohio Department of Education and qualifies as a high school graduation pathway. This program will be between the hours of 11:30 and 2:00 p.m. It's going to be housed at Lake Erie College campus. And as I discussed, this new program continues our commitment to ensure that we are preparing students with the skills and knowledge necessary to meet the workforce needs in northeast Ohio. This program is a direct reflection of our commitment to the community and also collaborated with the City of Mentor and our business partners who addressed that there was a need that was not being met, and we're able to now meet that need. Our next program is urban agriculture. Now, this program's going to be taking place at the Upland High School. It's going to be, it's a two-year program, three credits each year. And this program teaches students how to manage and work in the growing field of urban agriculture with skills related to plant and animal production, as well as business leadership, entrepreneurship abilities, and communication. So when I kind of talk about that business leadership, entrepreneurship, what exactly are we looking at? So students are going to learn about and operate a community-supported agricultural business, which sounds really fancy, but what that really means is they're going to be operating a farmer's market, which I think is actually really cool. It's pretty exciting that they're going to be doing, that they're going to be growing in, they're going to be having livestock, so they're actually going to be having eggs that they're going to be selling. It's kind of interesting that they're doing it. This is going to be part of their school day. Students will be responsible for all aspects of the business, including cultivating and growing food, managing and caring for livestock, including chickens and goats, apparently we're going to have two goats, packaging and marketing products, and interacting with customers. This experience will prepare students to enter thriving local food economy of northeast Ohio in a variety of capacities. I can tell you the demand for this program was overwhelming. I was very surprised, I was very excited to see the excitement from the students and the parents for this new program, which again is our goal, is making sure we're meeting the needs of our students. And then lastly, not a new program, but something we're going to be piloting of one of our existing programs. Our programming and software development pathway during this upcoming school year will be piloting providing students the option for traditional or honors credit for that program. Now, this is going to be completed through differentiation in curriculum and assignments. Honors credit will have increased rigor and industry-recognized credentials, including Oracle Database, HP Life, Microsoft Technical Associate Certifications, and Information Technology Infrastructure Library. So the idea we have is, again, is expanding our opportunities for our students. And because of the investments that we've made in instructional practices and technology, we have the ability to differentiate on an individual student level on a daily basis. And that allows us to do this in these programs. So we're really excited about this pilot, thinking that this may lead to something similar in some of our other programs as well. And that is my presentation. Do you guys have any questions regarding any of the programs? Go ahead.
The last one, software development, is it possible that students may not enroll in the whole program but could participate even if they're not a full Career Tech, or is it designed to really be a full Career Tech commitment?
It's still going to be the two-year program, which again fulfills their elective credits essentially is what that does, but it's going to be a two-year program. Now that being said, I know that Mrs. Bonas is working on a lot of things with Project Lead the Way, so some of the ideas we're looking at, some people want to jump in with computer programming, at the same time, some want to experience it but maybe not do a two-year commitment. So Project Lead the Way is really looking at that option, is kind of having that middle ground. We're looking at expanding that, I know, in multiple areas, including healthcare programming at the high school. All right, thank you, guys.
Will there be a chance for any more of these things?
That's what, well, I think, one of the things I talked about with Dr. Stevenson, our instructor for urban agriculture, he's really excited about this opportunity. So one of the ideas we're talking about with the farmer's market is the idea, so you guys know where they kind of get those bagged groceries, you kind of do a subscription where you get those, that's what we're discussing possibly trying to do with this. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glavine. Finally, I recommend approval of the curriculum revisions that included new high school courses, new AP textbooks, and updated middle school reading list.
I just wanted to say how impressed I was by the middle school reading list changes. I thought there were some wonderful titles and a nice balance, multicultural as well as historical, things of historical importance. I think that's a great addition for students.
Capements, Mrs. Bonas and Curriculum Department working with our teachers for a lot of those selections.
Someone? Second.
Call the roll. Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, members of the board, I recommend approval of agenda item C1 related certified personnel. In C2 through C4, all related human resource matters, as well as the addendum that was at your seat when you arrived this evening. I also recommend approval of agenda item 6D related to administrative personnel.
Someone?
Call the roll. Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Breyer?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my portion. This makes a ten.
Board of Education report and recommendations. Section Business and Mr. Porter.
Good evening again. I want to take a few minutes to update the board on a few capital projects that are stemming from our continued work on the strategic plan. In order to maintain buildings and facilities that meet the needs of our own students in our community, it's important that we continually assess the condition of our physical assets. At the Jacqueline A. Williams Building, formerly known as Headland Elementary, we have run a CARES program for students on the autism spectrum since 2011. When we reopened that building with the CARES program operating, we had a major construction renovation on the front wing of the building to equip the spaces to best meet the educational needs of students there, as we also anticipated a growing enrollment. Since enrollment has continued to grow since 2011, it has become necessary to equip the back wing of the building, which is where our high school age students would be served, to also have what is best needed to meet their needs. This would include demolition of some doors and walls, creating more wide-open workspaces, especially important to teach life and job-related skills. It would also include flooring, paint, electrical gas, plumbing connections, painting, and air conditioning. This work would also enable the gym in the front wing of the building to also have air conditioning added. CARES is self-sufficient, does not require general fund money to operate. The original renovation was paid back over four years from funds in the CARES Special Projects Account. The schedule of renovation anticipated to cost just over $1 million, subject to bidding, could be done with current funds in the CARES Special Projects Account. While the work is being done, our high school students can be temporarily relocated into the vacant Garfield Building, which is on the market for sale right now. We can use that building for a short time until about the end of the first semester, when we would expect our work to be finished at the Jacqueline A. Williams Building. Another element of the strategic plan to keep our athletic, another element of the strategic plan is to keep our athletic facilities current and equitable. To prepare for this, we are finishing up two types of survey work. One type of survey evaluates the entire tract of land for our high school campus. A second survey, a geotechnical survey, is currently planned to begin our first phase this year. Near the end of the summer, we would like to break ground for a new girls' varsity softball field made of turf that would be located across from the board office. Our girls have been using city fields for years that are designed for men's softball. The goal is to have that field ready for the opening of the 2020 girls' softball season this March. Survey work done at campus will allow us to map out the other phases. I anticipate four or five phases over the next several years that would allow us to add eventually restrooms, JV fields for baseball softball, a practice field area, and add any stadium or track circus upgrades, among other things. Given our level of Division One competition, the sheer number of students Mentor has involved in sports, and the potential multiple uses for our community, it is important to make sure we maintain athletic facilities that can support us. For the initial softball field, which, subject to bidding, would cost just over $1 million, we would again not plan to use general fund money, rather we would use permanent improvement funding from the sale of unused buildings like Red Moore and Rice as examples, that can be reinvested in our own students. I will continue to get periodic updates on projects, and the hope is to have ground broken soon for both of these projects. Questions on either of those?
How many students do we have in CARES currently?
Currently, it's in the upper 60s.
And when the renovations are completed, that's still the number we'll be serving?
That would still be the number. We could probably go up just a little bit, but it would catch us sort of up with our needs there. It would.
How many students will be going to Garfield during the renovations?
About 30 to 35. So we are, all of our high school age students.
Next, we'll entertain a resolution authorizing private sale of property following the auction. This is referring to Career Tech Times.
As I can just add, this is the second of our, what's become an annual two-step process. You'll be presented with a resolution authorizing us to pursue the purchase of a new home for its coming act during the year, subject to court authorization. And then, once the home's completed, I mean, the sale of it, as you know, required to hold an auction, and if that's not successful, then proceed with private sale. In this case, we were able to have a private sale above asking price on the second day it was on the market. So it's a testament to the quality of work and program. And not only provides a learning laboratory for our students, but also enhances community housing. So this is our fifth year to do this, and again, every year this is the second of our two-step process.
Special congratulations to the construction management department, all of the teachers and administrators, and all the people involved. It's really a wonderful achievement.
It was really impressive to see the quality of work. I said to my wife, this might be a retirement.[1742.41][1742.41](Laughter). She texted, so. Also, I just want to say, Dr. Glavine's enthusiasm and high energy that he brings to the program, it's impressive from a teaching, learning point of view, and I can see the rapport that you establish with your students, and so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We have an auction.
Someone? Second.
Call the roll. Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley? Want to just lay a report?
I do have a short report this month, and I apologize I didn't get it until late this afternoon, so, but a couple updates. The Ohio General The Ohio General Assembly failed to pass its two-year state operating budget by the constitutional deadline of June 30th. A couple of items that were in disagreement between the House and the Senate include business income tax deductions, additional state funding for school districts with growing enrollment, a nuclear power plant bailout plan, high school graduation requirement changes, and state takeovers of districts, otherwise known as academic distress commissions. Negotiations will continue among the leaders of the House of Representatives and the Senate and the governor as they finalize the items of disagreement in the budget bill. Also, a new school funding bill was introduced by Reps. Robert Cupp, Republican of Lima, and John Patterson, Democratic of Jefferson, on June 26th. They introduced House Bill 305, which would create a new school funding formula. The bill is based on nearly two years of work by the legislators and a group of sixteen superintendents and treasurers. According to the bill's sponsors, the bill contains modifications to the original recommendations that were released by the group in March, with emphasis on how state dollars are allocated to poor urban and rural school districts. Governor Patterson expressed hope that committee could begin hearings on the bill during the summer. However, House Speaker Larry Householder, Republican of Glendale, did not indicate to reporters whether he was willing to entertain such a request. There are two new appointees to the State Board of Education. The governor appointed Reginald Wilkinson and Stephen D. Dakin to serve on the State Board of Education. Wilkinson is serving the remainder of a term of outgoing board member David Brinkgar. And Dakin will serve the remainder of a term of outgoing board member Jimmy Shepherd. Couple new legislations that were introduced. House Bill 210, introduced by Rep. Sarah Brothers from Hamilton, would require Ohio Department of Education licensed preschool programs and other entities to screen and test the prospective employees for TV and annually test certain employees for a five-year period. House Bill 281, introduced by Rep. Neera Shantani from Miami Spur, to require each Board of Education to submit one valedictorian and one salivatory in each high school. House Bill 294, introduced by Rep. Senator Dentson of Cincinnati and Abby Miller of Columbus to modify the definition of school harassment, intimidation, or bullying. House Bill 305, introduced by Reps. Cupp and Patterson to create a new school funding formula. Senate Bill 168, introduced by Senators Kattiyuko of Richmond Heights and Tina Monarre of Columbus, would establish the Hunger Free Students' Rights Act to require schools to provide certain services to students who are eligible for career reduced pricing. Dan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, if I may, on the fair school funding proposal, tomorrow, Representatives Patterson and Cupp are holding an informational session, hopefully to help move along the process of getting hearings scheduled. Some of you may recall Representative Cupp, at one time, served on the Ohio Supreme Court in the conundrum of the raw decision that's handled down, declaring parts of school funding unconstitutional. He's opined, based on that prior experience, that the fair school funding proposal would indeed be constitutionally acceptable as a funding system. The changes that they made were based on some pushback on the impact on urban schools and small rural school districts. And it's one of the collision points between a fair funding system and political reality, that less than twenty percent of the school districts currently receive a formula, a calculated amount of funding. The other eighty percent are either capped in maximum growth or have a guaranteed prevent loss. Everyone agrees a fair funding proposal, based on number of students educated and focused on funding what happens in the classroom. And in fact, ninety percent of the proposed funding, fair school funding plan, would be directed into the classroom, and that was a component. We have to reconcile the impact on the urban schools that generally had declining enrollment and are off the formula now, and those districts are in the Appalachia, Iowa, and somewhat challenged. And they modified the proposal without compromising the core concept to provide some supplemental funding for those two types of district, and have lengthened the phase-in from four years to six years to be sensitive to resources available. The current proposal contained, House Bill 305, would provide us an additional five-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-forty-two dollars in this coming fiscal year if we're enacted. And on top of that, an additional four-hundred-six-thousand, one-hundred-sixty-nine dollars to follow here. So, this is something we've been following, we've discussed before with the board. I know Mary's advocated on the end of the board, supporting the concept of focusing on what it costs to educate a child today and correct the ones into their classrooms. So, we remain hopeful, and Speaker Householder has indicated that we may find a pathway for hearings to start here at the end of the summer. The current focus is on resolving these state budget challenges again. So, we remain very supportive and hopeful for this.
Dan, were you a part of it, or did you?
Kind of. I was not officially a part of it, but I did attend quite a few of the work sessions and supported it with research that my father and I did that was sponsored by Ashland University and that was embraced as one of the core funding components that calculate funding for the classroom. So, without all the intense commitment that those did step up, I'm a little worried.
I'm sure you hear about some guy at Glendale, but anything else? Okay, that's all I have, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
Chief Financial Officers report and recommendations. Thank you. I recommend the approval of Agenda Item 8A through D, Ms. President.
Second.
I'd just like to quickly point out, June 30th is our fiscal year end, and we enhance our fiscal brief, so as we always do, which is the high-level summary. This past fiscal year, overall revenues came in one point four percent above budget based on delinquent tax collections and higher taxing and financing payments. And we underspent the budget by six point five percent, benefiting from a lower budgeted increase in insurance costs and some lower spending in special education costs throughout. So, a very successful year. I think superintendent was focused on our fiscal discipline of our fiscal beliefs and managing the budget based on enrollment and programming needs. I believe we did have a successful year.
Mrs. Jezlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Supplemental appropriations. And that was included in my consent agenda.
Yes, A through D.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. There were some additional supplementals added at the last moment, so I'd also recommend approval of Agenda Item 8D, Ms. President.
Second.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jezlin?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes, thank you.
Any unfinished business? Any new business? Hearing of the public, any issues? We will not be going into executive session tonight. So, I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jezlin?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.